It's five thirty, I'll call our committee meeting to order. I have a, are you Kathy?
I'm not, but I'm saying, I'm that organization.
That organization, good. We, before we get started, I have a proclamation that I'd like to read and we'll bring you up here, let you take a picture with us in a moment, just let me read that proclamation while I'm here on the microphone first. One of the great things we get, I get to do as mayor, a lot of fun to do this. This is a proclamation about the General Federation of Women's Clubs of America. And so I'm gonna read that and then we're gonna take some pictures, who's gonna take pictures? Okay. Whereas the General Federation of Women's Clubs, GFWC, is a hundred and thirty-three-year-old international federation of women's clubs with more than sixty thousand members and is dedicated to community improvement by enhancing the lives of others through volunteer service and is located in Washington DC. And whereas the GFWC Stevieville Twentieth Century Club, Stevieville's oldest women civic organization was founded in nineteen oh one. Were you around, you weren't around then? Nineteen oh one is an active club member-
Just by the ear, Mayor.
Just by the, sit by the ear?
Yeah, just by the ear.
Is an active club member of the General Federation of Women's Clubs and is located in Stevieville, Texas. And whereas the GFWC Stevieville Twentieth Century Club, along with the Stevieville's First Presbyterian Church, First Christian Church, and St. Luke's Episcopal Church, have partnered with food insecurity organizations throughout Eureth County to provide over two hundred and fifty pounds of fresh produce since June nineteenth of twenty twenty-three for those with food insecurities, for those families in need and are looking for fresh produce to area resident, year, residents year-round. And whereas the GFWC International Organization has designated Saturday, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three as a GFWC National Day of Service for the state organizations and club members to create awareness of the critical issue of food insecurities, hunger, food sa- and food safety within the United States. And whereas the GFWC Stevieville Twentieth Century Club will hold a Stevieville Community Garden Workday and Educational Experience on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, GFWC's inaugural National Day of Service. Now, therefore, I, Doug Sven, Mayor of Stevieville, Texas, do proclaim September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, as the GFWC Stevieville Twentieth Century Club set up to End Hunger Day of Service in Stevieville, Texas. So if you all come up here and we'll take some pictures. It's an honor to work with some folks who take care of others, thank you all for your service. Is this the last?
May I say something?
Yes ma'am.
We're all invited to come on the thirty.
Come up here, come up here and make an announcement, just get behind the thing and tell us who you are and make an announcement. That way the whole citizens of Stevieville has access to it.
Yes, I am Dr. Kathy Horrock Smith. And for those who've been around a long time, my mother was Eloise Horrock. She was a pain about libraries. But anyway, the, on the thirtieth, we're having the work day. But I want to invite the whole city to come out and help us work, but we'd like for the city council members to come out and see where we're, where the garden is and what we're up to and show you the master plan that we have and where we plan to go in the future with it. So just want to invite everybody.
We'll bring your attention, it's a good organization, good project.
Yes.
We're gonna do it at a later date, but our next meeting was after September thirtieth, so I want to make sure we got that in tonight.
Right, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am. Okay, we'll go to city council committee meetings and we're gonna have, I'm gonna tell you all the adjustment we're making here because of some scheduling. We're gonna go to finance committee item number two because it requires a vote in the city council meeting, so I'm gonna turn that over to Justin Hasky, committee chair, and we'll go from there and we'll, then we'll recess and go into the council meeting.
And mayor, with that, I'll turn it over to city manager Jason.
Yes sir, Mr. Chair and members of the committee and other council members. Before we voted on the fee schedule as part of the budget tonight, we thought it appropriate to come before the finance committee and discuss what the proposed changes in the fee schedules for next year are. And so you have that document in front of you. Monica's done an outstanding job and got it all highlighted or striped through for us. Kind of the first things you see are on some telephone per-access line, those aren't set by us, those are set by the Public Utilities Commission. And so those are the rates that'll, that are going to affect for us as we move forward. Then in leisure services, the, kind of the first things you see is us dropping the rental fees back on the rec hall. And that's kind of driven to hopefully incur some usage, our usage has been down. And so Darren and his staff thought that by bringing that fee back down, that that might encourage some usage of it, so we'll try that. One of the other big stripe-throughs that you'll see all the way through Parks and Leisure is getting rid of non-resident fees to line up our fees for residents of Stevieville and non-residents of Stevieville and make it the same across the board on all of our fees. See, all of our campground fees are going away is in our discussions, we've talked about going a different direction there. And so we'll start that pretty quick after TSU homecoming, is that right?
Homecoming, yes.
And then as you scroll down to our fees for teams, our costs are going up, whether it's jerseys, one of our biggest costs that's going up is umpires and referees. It's become extremely difficult to get umpires and referees. There's enough select leagues playing around here that we're having to compete with that. And so Darren's had to raise what we're having to pay those officials. And so just trying to recruit those costs and so you'll see that reflected, those increases all throughout from our adult leagues down to our different age groups and our T-ball and all our different age groups of baseball, softball, and our football, all of our leagues across there. Changing some fees in our swimming programs. One of the ones that is not changing for swimming programs is the senior citizen and veterans will stay the same rate that it has been. We're striking the field lighting fees associated with our ball fields and that's driven by the lighting project that we did. The cost to run those lights is completely negligible to what it used to be by putting in the LED lights that we did. And so we think that'll help encourage some usage there as well. And then kind of the other big thing is our tournament fee, changing that from eighteen hundred to twenty-two fifty to more closely aligned with what it's costing us to put those tournaments on. And I think that's primarily it for Parks and Leisure Services. And then we'll have to scroll down several pages to Development Services, starting on, was that page eight? Steve, I may need you to help me explain a couple of these. We're adding a reinspection fee for second or more reinspections on a certificate of occupancy. So it would be the inspector's third total trip, so their call for the inspection and then we'll give you one reinspection if it's not right. But if they have to come out on a third trip, then we're gonna start assessing a fee for that. And that's primarily driven by, we're having, we're starting to ramp up on our issues on inspections for certificate of occupancies and the multiple trips by the inspectors back out there that's taking man-hours and taking them away from other assignments, because they're pretty busy. As you guys know, there's a lot of, a lot of development going on. A right-of-way permit for working in the right-of-way. Accessory building permit, we really have no way right now to regulate that or have any discussion about it. And so we, we've added a fee schedule in there. Where we got those numbers, the North Central Texas Cog publishes a fee survey of all the municipalities in the North Central Texas Cog. And so we look through there and really look to identify communities similar in size to Stevieville and scope and, and see what those fees are and see what sounds reasonable. And so that's how we came up with those numbers. Residential remodel, we just changed it to a flat fee schedule, basically, no matter what the square foot size was. Demolition permit, we did raise the cost on that and that's to reflect our cost on it. It's been twenty-six bucks, but it's not just the permit process of it. We have about three different employees involved in that, from the building official to the inspectors. And so just trying to make sure that, that we're covering all of our costs on that particular task. Electrical permit fees, we're just lining that out for one fee instead of up to six hundred volts, over six hundred volts and trying to just line it all out instead of having multiple different categories. The same thing on the solar panel installations. Plumbing permit and lawn sprinklers, lining all that out to just one straight fee instead of a fee plus X amount for a water heater or a gas system test. Just one plumbing permit fee to cover any type of, anything that's covered under that. Down on page eleven, you start to see the water fund. And so those are what all the rates will be reflected by moving into year three of the rate model that we adopted to fund the capital improvements needed in the water and the wastewater system. Page fourteen, we'll start the sewer fund, which will have the same reflection for the next step in the rate model as we move forward. No change in stormwater, but remember, we're, as part of the budget that we'll discuss, we've included funds to do a rate study so that we can determine how the rates need to be or if they need to be adjusted in comparison to the list of capital needs that are needed in the stormwater category. And one change in the landfill from sixty dollars per ton to sixty-five dollars per ton. And that is an adjustment that'll go with the construction of the type four landfill over the type one once we get permitted, plus head us in to what we hope would be the construction of a transfer station. And so like our other utility funds, the rates have to be reflective and be adjusted to be able to cover the capital needs that have to occur at the landfill.
And we're still on schedule to, we think to get that thing permitted.
Yes sir.
Okay.
Yes sir. So any questions on the fee schedule?
Just the, my only question would be on, as we consolidate the electrical and plumbing fees, the standard at which the building requirements and the, and the tradesman's job is still inspected to the same standard? We're just, we're consolidating the fees, we're not, we're not losing anything in terms of oversight?
No.
Okay.
No, I, really, we're making it more efficient on both ends, both the customers end and our end. If I think that gets a little confusing, okay, it's thirty-five dollars, but then it's four dollars for a water heater or seven dollars for a gas system, or we solve that list, a little bit confusing. It's just easier to say it's X amount for a plumbing permit, no matter what it is. But if it falls in what needs to be regulated, then yes, it's still regulated and inspected, just like it normally would be.
That was my only question, any other? Yes sir.
So, and this, I mean, maybe for Steve, but on the remodel fee, we've dropped from a flat rate of two fifty-eight to a minimum of a hundred plus a square foot add. Does, is that, I mean, is that gonna be about the same?
Yes sir.
Dollar-wise, did, so you looked at-
The reason why we wanted it adjusted on that bottom end is because we're using the remodel fee for things that weren't really in the fee schedule to try to cover the permit cost. But the bottom of that permit fee schedule was really quite a bit higher. And I felt like we were overcharging on things like a-
A bathroom?
A small bathroom.
Right.
Anything like that, that we were starting off at a much higher rate. So I think it's gonna, we'll have some on the lower end that's a little wider, but we're still gonna have the, the larger remodel fees that would collect the cost directly from regardless.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? With that, entertain the motion for recommendation for council.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval to the full council of the fee schedule as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same as I. Motion carries and mayor, I'll turn it over back to you.
Thank you, we're going to recess the committee meetings and go into the special city council meeting. First item on the agenda is a public hearing to discuss the, or have input from citizens on fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Do I hear anybody who wants to come up and make a, just have a discussion? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And next item is consider adoption for ordinance for the annual operating budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. During your motion-
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt, is it twenty-five, okay. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the, adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash O dash twenty-five approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four annual operating budget.
So, have a motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Roll call vote.
Roll call.
It is a roll call vote?
Okay.
Place one is not here, place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Place seven.
Aye.
Place eight.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is to consider ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the twenty-three, twenty-four annual operating budget. I'll turn that over to-
Yes sir. So to, the tax rate that is proposed is point three eight seven two, which is lower than what the current rate is of point three nine five eight. That is what is known as the voter approval rate. And so because we're at the voter approval rate, the law requires it to be read as an increase in taxes over last year because it'll generate about two fifty?
For just the, not including the new, the new is about two twenty.
Two, two hundred and twenty thousand in increased revenue over last year. So the law requires us to read it a certain way.
Out of a one point eight billion dollar appraised values, right?
Yes.
So we're raising-
One point nine, actually.
One point nine billion, we're raising two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in new revenue.
Yes sir.
And that's based on the lower tax rate, but the new appra- the new valuations.
Correct.
Okay. Do I hear a motion or discussion or a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four annual operating budget.
A motion and a second, does that have to be a roll call as well?
Yes sir.
Place one, place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Five.
Aye.
Six.
Aye.
Eight.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, consider adoption of the ordinance setting fee schedule fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, which we just went over.
Uh, no sir, we're tax rate number- Oh, I'm sorry, I did skip one.
There you go, I, I do that often, don't worry about it.
It's like, wait a minute.
I, Sarah corrects me all the time. Okay, do I, we had a discussion earlier, Mr. Hasky, have that one?
Yep, uh, Mr. Mayor, so the finance committee met fifteen minutes ago and reviewed the fee schedule and it was at the pleasure of the committee to take a positive recommendation to pass the ordinance of the fee schedule for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And with that, I will make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash O dash twenty-six, ordinance setting fee schedule for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Second.
Have a motion, second, further discussion? Now, that's not, it's not a roll call, it's a motion, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is we're going into a public hearing on the twenty twenty-three tax rate. Anybody like to come forward and discuss the tax rate? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and consider adoption of ordinance setting the tax rate for twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the property tax rate increase by the adoption of the, of a tax rate of point three eight seven two per one hundred dollars, which is effective, which is effectively a three point eight percent increase in the tax rate.
Okay, mayor, a second?
Second.
A motion, second, any further discussion? Okay, we need a roll call vote, so place one, place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Five.
Aye.
Six.
Aye.
Seven.
Aye.
Eight.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is consider approval of hot funds expense for promotional opportunity. Jason and I had a meeting last week and I'll let, turn it over to him and present it.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, last week, the mayor and I were contacted by a gentleman who's a producer with a show called Viewpoint, which airs on public television, PBS in our area. Viewpoint is narrated on the front end and back end by Dennis Quaid, who was here in Stevieville recently. And so they, they have pitched to us doing a segment on Stevieville. So Viewpoint airs for approximately five minutes. And so as the way it was explained to us is there's not commercials on like PBS. And so your shows are twenty-five minutes or fifty-five minutes and then there's a five-minute filler. And they use Viewpoint a lot to do the filler. And so what they're proposing is to do a show on Stevieville, Texas. And then air it, let's see, forty-five to sixty times per quarter for the next year. And they estimate that they'll reach sixty million households and businesses to do an educational-style video on Stevieville about what we have in the community, what's going on in the community, why you should visit, why you should maybe move here, bring your business here. Overall, it was a really good program, they, they sent us some links and I've kind of watched a couple of those links. The, what they're asking of us is that if we want to participate, they said it would probably take, on the whole, for them, somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand for them to produce that segment. What they would be asking of us is twenty-five thousand nine hundred to sign up and then about thirty-four hundred in fees for the crew, film crew and that, that would come down and do all the filming to create the show. It would be about six to seven hours of filming that they would do and they'll line up who they want to talk to ahead of time. It's not a hundred percent that it would be us, they said that they're considering us along with some others. The mayor and I have a follow-up phone call at ten o'clock in the morning. We told them we would discuss this with council this evening. I'm gonna recommend that, you know, for that kind of price tag and the reach- to talk to ahead of time. Uh, it's not 100% that it would be us. They said that they're considering us along with some others. Uh, the mayor and I have a follow-up phone call at 10 o'clock in the morning. Uh, we told them we would discuss this with council this evening. Uh, I'm gonna recommend that, you know, for that kind of price tag and the reach that it has, uh, I don't think that's a bad deal. Uh, so it would be about 30,000 for us total. Uh, I think we do that out of hot funds, uh, because the goal for that would be to drive tourism and visitation to Stevensville. Now, if that results in new residents, that's great. But I, I think the, the tourism side of it, uh, and then that would allow us to use those funds as opposed to, to general tax dollars. Um, I did visit with Ms. Durfee since she's the chair of that committee and explained this with her and she was generally supportive of, of the idea.
One of the good things that they said were that they target venture capitalists, people who have, who are investing in new businesses, specifically in small town, smaller town communities. And so, people who are Wall Street Journal kind of readers. And so, it's, I think it's a good group. I was impressed. I hope we would be accepted. Any other questions, anybody?
I, I do want to say that we are getting our brand out there in the community just by Tarleton being on ESPN Plus and linear television constantly every weekend. So, um, we're, we're getting, we're getting, we're getting our, our brand out there in the community in Tarleton that we're not even paying for. Just comes-
Millions of dollars.
Millions of dollars that we're, that we're getting, that type of exposure in this community.
I did miss one other piece of what they do with it. They're gonna create a one-minute video out of it, uh, that'll air once nationally in all 50 states and then 400 times regionally in the top 100 cities based on population. Their viewership for that is, is around 84 million, uh, is what they see. And they do it in prime time between 6:00 PM and 11:00 PM. In the networks, this segment airs on as CNBC, Fox Business, Discovery Channel, and Bloomberg. Uh, so that would be-
Well, this is also, we'll own the right, we'll own rights to that one.
Yes.
So we can use it wherever we want to as well.
Yes.
Another thing, another thing we might want to do, Mayor, is, is we have so much advertisement on ESPN Plus and on linear, so we might want to get some type of this partial segment on the Stevensville commu, on community. Just besides showing Tarleton's, Tarleton itself, we need to probably be showing a little bit about the Stevensville community.
Hopefully this one-minute one would help with some of that. But that's a good idea. Anybody else?
So, Jason?
Yes, sir.
Regarding content, would the city have any input, control, veto capabilities on content?
Possibly. We, we didn't get very detailed in that. They wanted to see where we stood on the idea. And I think we'll learn more tomorrow if we, if we decide we want to go down that road. Uh, but then it, it sounded like, yes, they'll start having discussions with, they're gonna tell us, hey, these are the type of people we would want to visit with and those kind of things.
They did say that they wanted us to identify what we want to highlight. So I think we'll, from the get-go, we'll have some input on that.
Are they planning on only having one version of this five-minute, uh, film? Or would they be multiple versions of it? Because, I mean, five minutes is a long time, but it's also a, a short time.
Right.
So I don't know if you can focus on everything you need to focus on a one-five-minute, uh, you know, mini-documentary about Stevensville. I didn't know if there's, because it's gonna air so many times, if they'll do more than one version.
I don't know the answer to that.
That'd be a question we can ask more.
Yes.
Anybody else? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
I guess, um, sorry.
Go ahead.
So what do we?
We don't even know if we're getting it.
Yeah, it is. So what are you asking us?
I, I guess what I'm asking for is the approval of the expenditure of, I'd say, up to 30,000 in hot funds. Uh, and the ability for the mayor or I, the one, uh, whichever's more appropriate when we get all the information, uh, to enter into an agreement with Viewpoint to produce this segment, uh, for the city of Stevensville if they, if they select us.
So, so we just adopted a budget. Uh, I know that wasn't in there. So what kind of-
Me and Monica, we would, we would take that out of this year's hot funds.
The reserves or, oh, out of 22, 22, 23?
23, yes, sir.
With the, whatever's left over from reserves. Um, and then if it didn't, let's say tomorrow it doesn't take, and we've budgeted the item, what happens?
It would be treated like any other project or open P O. that we have. Our, our charter says that all of our appropriations last to the end of the year unless they're spent, encumbered, or like capital projects. So usually you'll see that we come in and we do those carryover, um, because I can't always get them exactly right. And in this case, I didn't even know about it. So we'll just do a carryover and so it takes it out of the reserve where the unspent money ran and it's in budget.
Okay. Thank you, Monica. Would you, the council? Well, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. To approve spending for Jason to authorize up to $30,000, he has the ability to do 25 on his own. So this is the reason he's coming here is because it's 30,000 or 25,000. So I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, we have two opposed. Motion passes. Other items on the, we have no other items on the agenda, so we will adjourn the special city council meeting and reconvene in the committee meeting. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Hasky.
So, Mr. Mayor, um, we went out for RFP, RFQ, RFP, the RFP?
Yes, RFP.
Yes. Uh, for audit, I believe Brooks Watson has done the audit now for five years. And so, we are, I believe by charter required to go out for bid. Don't have to change, but-
We don't have to change, but we, we, it says about every audit year.
Yeah.
We need to go out and have-
So we've, we've done that. Um, and we do have the results back. So I'll turn it over to, to Monica.
Sarah, would you mind getting that one from the machine? Sorry, I left it in there. So, um, we, we had four proposals. Um, Brooke Watson, BMY, I think it's called Eddie Bailey, and Tilo Brown. And so, myself, Mr. Hasky and Mr. McClinton sat down and reviewed them and graded them. And so, um, when we did the grading, we had to look at a couple of different things because they all come in with like the base financial audit and then the single audit. And some of them say if it's, if you do more than, if you have more than one program, it's additional fees. Um, or in this case, we're looking at the potential of having to do a state single audit as well as a federal single audit. And so that would affect the fees. So we looked at it, didn't matter which, which way I looked at it, um, just looking at that for the, the first year and then just like a regular single audit in a, in a federal, uh, one major program in the future years. Um, what we did is it, it still goes to BMY. Uh, they were the, they got the most points. So, um, one of the things that we talked about was the independence factor of BMY, BMY, because some of us have not lived here forever. And so, Mr. Hasky, um, has worked for and has BMY Wealth Management. And then there's, um, BMY CPAs. Um, they are actually not, uh, related, um, as far as ownership of business or anything like that. I think years ago, 25 years ago, there was a relationship, but there's, there's not anymore. Um, that is something that I was able to confirm. Um, each accounting firm and each CPA licensed in the state of Texas, you can search them on the Texas Accounting Board website. And so I, doing our due diligence, actually went and did that on all the firms. You can see if there's disciplinary action against them and how long it's been. And so, when, when we go look, it, it shows that, um, Mr. Hasky doesn't, does not have an ownership in, in BMY. And so, I think that covers our, um, issue with independence in fact and appearance. About the only relationship they have is he does rent office space from them. Um, but I do not believe that that would rise to the, um, 5% or more of their annual revenue. So I actually think we're-
Are you paying my tax?
I, I think we're actually okay on that. So, um, based on the, the point system that we looked at, I mean, uh, I did speak to, um, BMY today and yesterday. Uh, the, the hours that they've, they've estimated were, um, about 100 less than what Brooke Watson and, uh, one of the other firms put in. And so, we did, we had that discussion about what happens if, you know, you kind of underestimate it. And, and so that is a not-to-exceed amount and that would be on them, um, unless there was some extraordinary, extraordinary circumstances, um, which that would be the same with pretty much, uh, most of the firms. Any other questions? So, so the recommendation is that, um, we, we send the council that we would like to do a contract, um, one-year contract with an option to renew for four years with BMY to prepare the, um, financial audit and the single audit for the, the city for the fiscal year ending '23 and then the next four years.
Any questions for Monica?
So there was the one question about the additional single audit if necessary. Did you find a dollar amount on that?
I did. So, um, I, I checked with both BMY and, um, uh, Brooks Watson. Um, and Brooks Watson had said that, because the other ones were a little bit more clear in, in the way they stated how it would be. And so with Brooke Watson, if, if having to do the state single audit, since it would be the same program potentially, it would only be, uh, like another 3,500. And then when I spoke with, um, um, BMY, if, uh, it, it wouldn't be any, if it's the same state audit, it'd be like a, a 3,500. So, yeah, it was very close. Now, if it was different programs, it might be 75. But I factored all that in and it still played out, so.
I guess from an independent standpoint, just to clarity, so Monica did address, I don't have any ownership in BMY and they don't have any ownership in the wealth management practice either. So there's no overlap of ownership, there's no reciprocal agreement, there is nothing that binds us related to our client content.
You don't have any conflict from what I'm hearing?
Well, a, a good local example of something like this is Discount Will and Tire. A lot of times when you are not traveling in Stevensville, or if you have not lived in Stevensville a very long time, when you think of that, you think of the big chain Discount Tire. And it's not the same company. They're, they're not a franchisees. They're not franchisees. They're not even related to each other. So I think this is a similar situation where the, the name might let people think that it's a, a same company, but they're not. They're, at one time, 25 years ago, they were related, but no longer.
Monica, the only thing, on the proposed costs, the spreadsheet I have is 48,500 for the first year and then 45,500 for the second year. Is it a typo or?
No, it's because, um, this year's kind of a, uh, I believe going to be a fairly unique situation in that we, there's the potential that we might have to have a federal single audit and a state single audit, um, which usually we have one or the other. And I don't anticipate that in future years.
Okay.
Could be wrong, but it's the, the Texas water development on the east side sewer. That money comes from two sources, both federal and state. And it just depends on, you know, how it plays out, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Hearing none, do we have a recommendation for council?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, take counsel with positive recommendation, that we engage BMY to do the financial audit, um, with a one-year contract with an option up to four additional years.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kind of opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Monica. And, Mr. Mayor, I believe that is it for the Finance Committee.
Thank you, sir. Nomination's created. Ms. Smith?
At this time, I'm going to make a motion that we, we have one open seat right now on planning and zoning. And I would like to make the motion that we move our alternate Tyler White, Tyler Wright from his alternate position to seat one, um, that's currently vacant.
Uh, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. And that's all that I have on my nomination's created to that.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. McClinton?
Public Works.
Mr. Mayor, two items on the Public Works committee meeting for this evening. And Mr. Williams is gonna talk to us about both of these items.
Much mind you saving us?
I just, uh, I just tried to get a drink.
Is it, is it that bad?
Went down the wrong pipe, so I apologize. Oh, my goodness. Timing is everything. Okay. Good evening, uh, Mayor. I cannot get this out. Give me just one second. Well, there's the first for everything. The first item is the Harbin Drive Improvements Project. I'm sorry. I'm gonna work through this, so give me just a minute. That's what caused it.
Here you go.
The, it, it is. That's okay. Thank you, Mayor. So the project was designed by Friesa Nichols and was awarded to J. Mills Contracting on October 4th, 2021, uh, for just under 10.1 million dollars. The project provides the full reconstruction of Harbin from Washington up to the Northwest Loop. So, uh, it includes a replacement of water and sewer lines and all the infrastructure and also includes the, uh, the new addition of stormwater lines to address the runoff that, um, was damaging Harbin to begin with. Thank you, Chief. That's Stevensville Water.
There was a bottle of water.
It was the bottle of water that did it. Yes, sir. I can feel it coming back. Along the way, there've been quite a few challenges, uh, on this project. There's six total change orders, three of which have already been approved and three which are pending. And that's what we're asking for approval for this evening. And so, I'll take a few minutes and I'll go through each of those. The first change order came at the very beginning of the project and it was to lower a water line so that we could get a drainage ditch, uh, through. Uh, the water line conflicted with the grade of the ditch and so that water line was lowered. Problem was our map showed that to be an eight-inch line. It was a 12-inch line. The second change order was, on that same drainage ditch, there was a sewer line that had to be rerouted and it was not picked up on the original design. That was a, a very impactful, uh, change order. That first one was just under $25,000. The second one was a change order amount of 11,600. But when you, when you make changes to the existing project line items, it had an overall impact of just under $118,000. So very impactful there. The third change order was the one that we brought to you earlier this year and that was what resulted in that, uh, M O U with Tarleton. That was the university-driven change order that had the $534,000 stormwater, uh, installation under Tarleton so they could get that complication center underway, which is underway currently. The pending change orders, four, five, and six, number four had a change order amount of just over $54,000 and that was to install water lines that, uh, were through intersections and they just weren't picked up on the original design. Uh, we also had quite a few lines that needed to be replaced. Um, we don't want to pave over those new lines and then take the chance on having to, I'm sorry, pave over the old lines and then take the chance on having to dig up new concrete to make those repairs. So that's, that was change order number four. Number five is, is pending. It actually, um, started with a, a very large reduction in the signalization cost. So when we revised the layout of Harbin Drive, there's signalization changes at both Washington and the Northwest Loop. And it just so happens that that dollar amount could have been reduced significantly. We were able to do that. What we did is we incorporated lighting and irrigation in the medians, which were both left off of the initial design. So overall, uh, it resulted in a $32,000 increase. But, uh, that was pretty good. The, the initial amount was around, right around $300,000. So, we felt like that was a good exchange. The sixth and final change order on here this evening is for $44,000 and it was just simply an overrun. We had, um, not getting into the specifics of the project so much, but we changed from a curb and gutter that was separate from the pavement, the roadway, to one that- a curb and gutter that was separate from the pavement, the roadway, to one that was attached to the roadway. So it's all put together at the same time. That results in less labor and less material. And so we had about a $300,000 savings right there. The problem was, the quantity was not captured correctly in the original design. On top of that, the paving inside the medians themselves was not captured in the original design. So that's included in this change order as well. Now, before I move to the last item, I want to say that we are looking at alternatives to address the medians with the incorporation of brick or maybe some other different patterns to really get this project right. This is the gateway to the university and important to the community, so we want to get this right. The last item on here is the additional overruns. And for those that may not know exactly what that means, an overrun, for example, would be if your project called to replace 10 fire hydrants and you actually replaced 11. Well, that one is an overrun. So that's, that's just terminology used to replace something that's already in the contract itself. The second page of the staff report, I've tried to break this down to show in tables what it looks like, but I'll just read through it real quick. The university agreed to cover the project costs for the university of around $1.4 million. And I'm sorry, I'll make that clear, exactly $1.4 million in the very first amendment to the memorandum of understanding executed back in January of 2022. The cost of that third change order, we covered that, was $534,000. And there was $200,000 added into that, as well as a $50,000 contingency put into a second MOU to cover that installation of the stormwater pipe for that complication center. So in short, the total project cost when it was bid out was just over $10 million. The introduction of these change orders and the cost overruns amounts to $11.3 million. 2.1 million of that is the university obligation, and the city's obligation is about $9.14 million. Originally, this project was funded with bonds from fiscal year '21 and '22 proceeds, and that was in the amount of $8.5 million. To cover those overruns, and we've been expecting some of this, we did allocate $807,000 to cover those overruns. That leaves us with a bit of a surplus of just over $150,000 to cover anything else that may come up for the remainder of the project. The project is scheduled to be completed in the spring of 2024 currently. That's a lot, so be happy to take any questions now that I've got my voice back.
Any questions, Nick?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure it's clear that we often hear Tarleton doesn't pay taxes. I just want to make sure it's clear, how much did they put toward the project?
Just over $1.6 million.
$1.6 million bucks in the, on their campus, the project was $500,000? Is that how much of it was on their campus?
Uh, no, sir, this is for directly related improvements. But they've been very easy to work with, and they've been very upfront and a good partner to work with.
Just want to make sure I understood that they did participate in the project.
Yes, sir.
Is it the Northwest Loop, the Robert Glasgow Loop?
Ah, yes, sir. Good catch, Robert J. Glasgow Loop.
Any other questions for Nick?
Is there, is there something we need to do then, if there's a surplus in place?
Well, what we're asking for is approval of change orders four, five, and six attached to the back of this staff report.
Yes, sir, that's an amount of expenditure that needs to be approved by council. So if the committee would, if it's a pleasure, recommend it to council, then we'll catch it on the temp.
Okay. But we're approving the expenditures, but we anticipate, barring any unforeseen changes, we've got, we should come in about $150,000 lighter than we planned on?
Understand that when he says.
Just want to make sure we're, I want to make sure I didn't misunderstand what.
You may have, remember. We put eight and a half in that debt issuance from those 2021 COs to cover that project. We're at 9.3 right now.
Okay.
So that, that money that we appropriated to cover this is out of our annual street maintenance. That's the really where we're getting it. So we're holding off on some other projects until we get this Harbin Drive done or feel that we're done with change orders.
Right.
That's how we're appropriating. That's what's led to some of the meetings.
Tonight, we're going to, we're going to appropriate 9.3 million to the project, is what these change orders will do?
Yes.
In aggregate?
Yes.
Okay.
So just, so overruns, change orders, you know, is this common on large projects? This is the kind of stuff that I see all the time. But there is some fallout, and I think tonight would be a good time to talk about. Some of this was just absolute misses by the engineers that were assigned this project, that worked on behalf of the city of Stevieville. So either one of you guys want to address steps being taken?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So Fries Nichols was our contracted engineer to design this project and run the construction on it. And as you said, there were just some flat misses. And so Nick has arranged multiple meetings for us with representatives of Fries Nichols where we've discussed some of this. And I quite frankly asked for some of our money back. I was turned down.
How much did we get back?
Do what?
So how much did we get back?
Well, they have declined to do that. So I've instructed Mr. Williams to put some RFQs together, and we'll pick new firms as we move forward on other projects.
Any other questions for Nick on this one? Pleasure of the committee.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve change order number four, number five, and number six as presented by Mr. Williams.
Sorry.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. This is a recommendation to the council. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That will move forward to the council with a positive recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next item, we're moving to the wastewater treatment plant.
The next item is a change order to discuss for the East Side Sewer Project Phase One. That's the project implementing our new interceptor sewer from the wastewater treatment plant all the way up to the trailhead at Collins. And it's a total amount of the change orders, $164,500, I think, and I don't know, Jeff, if you can zoom in on any of those, but what we found was a structure buried just outside of the headworks, directly in the path of our sewer line. And as you scroll through some of that, you can see that that excavator, really, there's some pictures in here that do it a little bit more justice, that is a massive, massive structure. And so what happened was, we had to have the contractor rent equipment there. If you were able to zoom in on some of that, you could see there's a hydraulic hammer on the end of that trackhoe. They literally had to jackhammer it apart, take it out in pieces. That's a good one right there in the middle that shows you the scope, the size of this concrete structure.
What was it?
That they found. It's called an MHOF tank, and it predates the round clarifiers that you see at the wastewater treatment plant. Just some quick research on it, that type of treatment structure dates back to the early 1900s or even earlier. Just so happens that nobody knew it was there until we started to dig. And it just happened to be placed in a row, directly in line with our interceptor. So while it is a lot of money, I will tell you that I could not be more impressed with MH Civil and how they've handled it and the progress that they've made on this project.
That's a big disclaimer.
Took 10 days with multiple people, even in that picture, you can see there's three excavators on site. And it was a big undertaking. Again, this is an interceptor that should service this community for a century or more, and so we have to get this right. I could have tried to explain this to you, but I think the pictures tell the story here.
Any questions for Nick on this one?
Good luck.
Sometimes you get all the luck.
So what you're asking for on this one, Nick, is the change order is 164, is that correct?
164.5, yes, sir. Just a recommendation for approval.
I guess budget-wise, we can make this work.
Yes, I did visit with the finance department to make sure that I could speak confidently when I came up here this evening, to tell you that the revenue proceeds will cover the cost of it.
Did you say that? Is that what you signed, Mr. Smith?
It's never good when the, when the public works director walks into my office. They always want money.
Pleasure of the committee on this one.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the change order number one to contract MH Civil contractors for the East Side Sewer Interceptor Phase One project in total amount of $164,500. Kevin.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor of moving this as a positive recommendation to the council, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Mr. Mayor, that is the end of the public works committee meeting, sir.
Well, thank you. We've worked through the council, special meeting, and committee meetings, so it is now 6:26. No other items on the agenda, we'll stand adjourned.